Meeting, meeting call to order today, September 3rd. It is now 7:10 PM, Town Council meeting, Town Council Chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick Island, John Lee Richardson, prayers.
Oh, heads. Heavenly Father, we ask that you are present this evening. Bless this body with the Divine Spirit and guide us. Father, bless this great town and all the great people in it. We pray this in your name, amen.
Chairman, listen, Father, read this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilman Nessier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Amplifier loudspeaker and theatrical performances, shows and exhibitions. Stalwart Films LLC, attention Joshua Yeoman, dates 9/9/2019 through 3/31/2020. Location 27 Home Street and West Warwick Civic Center, 100 Factory Street.
Move the resolution?
Resolution.
A second? Discussion? Laurie, do you want to just give a brief update on what the Civic Center is about?
This is the same AMC series, they're coming back. They are definitely shooting at Home Street. They will use the Civic Center, probably same as they did last year. We were in talks of them actually using the Civic Center, but they found somewhere where they can keep their props up for six months, where I can't give them six months of my time. But other than that, we've met with fire, we've met with police. Everything's in order so far and, you know, we'll do the same thing as we did last year. Whenever they're going to be shooting in town, I will send out an email to everyone that needs to know, the buses, the school department, we'll send out the robo calls, we'll, everybody will stay on the same page and it'll work out wonderful, just like it did last year.
So the school department does know?
Yep. Yep, I've talked to Kenny, I've talked to the superintendent.
Okay.
What does that bring in, Laurie, as far as financial?
Last year I brought in a little bit, under $7,000, and that was just for them using the parking lot a few times, so.
And what's the contract for this year, same?
Yes, so whenever they do need it, and we'll figure it out how many times that they do need it, and again, shooting and a film, so they could need it, you know, they could have a great day of shooting and it could be wonderful, over and done within one day, or it could be terrible days of shooting because you are dealing with children, actresses and actors.
Do they pay by the day? Is that how that works?
Yes, yep.
What do you, what do they pay by, usually by the day?
It's $1,000 to use the parking lot. And they use, in the morning they'll come in and they'll do, they'll do like breakfast for their actors and actresses, and that doesn't affect any of the rentals or anything that goes on. So it works out really nice. It would have been nice to have Christmas land set up in there, but, you know, it's filming, I get it.
Do you have somebody from the public? Do you have something, just come on up, state your name and address for the record?
The Bertis Anamo, 27 Pond Street. My questions are, is volume, when is this all going to take place? We never knew, we never got a notice. When this stuff went on last year, we just started seeing signs come up. We heard word of mouth. I just want to know, like, are we going to get notification? How loud is it going to be? What hours of the day is it going to be? Because they did filming at night when they were here last time, or during the nighttime hours, dusk. So I just want to know, you know, what's more about it. I mean, it was kind of vague, just that it was going to happen between this time and they're applying for this.
Mr. Yeoman, you here?
Yeah.
Do you want to just come up and answer?
Sure.
Have you answered that a little better for us?
Counselors, my name is Josh Yeoman, I'm the location manager on season two of Nosferatu. I did not work on season one, but I'm glad to be part of this season. As far as outreach, we work at the town, I think there's some town rules about notifying the butters, which will follow, and we also tend to put out a flyer in advance with our names, phone numbers, the hours, any parking restrictions, so people can contact us, excuse me, contact us directly. We currently don't have a filming date or a time, but again, once we get all that information, I think it's, I mean, it's important to get everyone on board and let everyone know the plan, so, you know, people don't get upset about the production.
How far are you from Home Street?
Around the pond, right around the pond. Two hundred feet.
How far in advance will you know to let us know? A week, a month?
Yeah, I think we have about two weeks in general on television. We get, television works a little, this is a little too inside baseball, you can tell me to stop, but we get script, final scripts about two weeks in advance.
Okay.
And then we get a final schedule, so, I mean, we like to put a flyer out a week in advance, that way people know what's going on. If they have any questions or concerns about the production, we can, you know, get at least a week's notice to the butters and the residents.
So when are you looking to, like, if you were to get, is it October?
October, we're looking at filming in October right now for episode three.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is a six month, I mean, this goes from 9/9/19 to 3/31/20, so.
Correct, yeah, we film, actually Monday is our first day of filming, this coming Monday, and then we film until, I think January 15th right now is our last day of filming, that's if the weather is good and we get everything done in time. So then, you know, there might be some overlap or.
But that's not every day in that timeframe, obviously.
No, exactly, no, it's, it's, we're all over the state of Rhode Island, Monday to Friday on this TV show.
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, we're going to get notified, I mean, and then how, you know, so it's going to be like something really loud, like.
Yeah, there's, we, we record sound on a, on a TV show, so we like to keep it quiet. I mean, there's obviously some noise with it, but it's not our, our plan to make a lot of noise. And obviously if there's any, anything out of the ordinary, it would go on that flyer. I just did an action movie in, in Boston where we were Ryan Reynolds shooting automatic weapons in the city.
Name drop, there's a name drop over there. Just chilling with Ryan Reynolds the other day.
So obviously, like, if you're doing anything like gunfire explosions or car chases, you want to let people know in advance, you know, people don't want to wake up to this, they want to know what's happening.
You're supposed to get that phone call.
Exactly.
But if I remember correctly, last.
Any issues last year?
No, but I remember last year, if I was correct, like, when there was, there was a certain, when it was going to be more, like, was there a certain license that went out, when it was going to be a bigger project? I remember specifically up, when you filmed up there, on the Leonard Ave, there was one that was going to be out of the ordinary, we had, they had to get like an, an amplifier license for something specific last year, right? There was one, we, we definitely did an amplifier license for one of them last year.
That's what this all means, amplifier speaker. This is, this is amplifier and.
Yeah, okay, this is amplifier, okay.
Chief, no issues last year. You know, I think the only time, sometimes we had some parents a little frustrated up at the high school with the directions of parking and whatever else. We're just going to make sure we're focused on that this year a little better.
I, I did get some complaints about roads being blocked off without notification right around the Civic Center, and so.
And I think those are improvements.
Communication is important, yes.
Correct, yeah, I think those are improvements, we can make, you know, learn from our, I didn't work on season one, but obviously improve communication.
Welcome back to West Warwick. Welcome.
One day I went home to go get the kids.
Now, welcome, welcome back to West Warwick, glad you're still filming here.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
We'll see you for season three when you come back to talk to us then.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it.
Marion, I'd like to close the executive session at this point. Under section 42 dash 46 dash four, in the following sections of Rhode Island general laws, Town Council will close the executive session that was held tonight, Tuesday, September 3rd, that discussed the following. 42 dash 46 dash 5A2, collective bargaining, IBOP, Local 312, regarding contract negotiations. B, 42 dash 46 dash 5A2, collective bargaining, IAFF, Local 1104, regarding contract negotiations. And item C, 42 dash 46 dash 5A2, collective bargaining, RI Council 94, Local 2045, regarding contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance number 2019 dash seven, first reading sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico, previously tabled, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick by adding thereto Appendix D entitled Town of West Warwick Comprehensive Plan Update 2019.
Make a motion to move the ordinance off the table?
I'll second.
We could discuss that, I know Councilwoman.
Actually, I had some conversation with, with the town planner, David was involved as well. There have been several conversations. I've had a lot of people come to me and suggest that we have a workshop or some sort of a public discussion about the comprehensive plan, because it was three years ago that it actually happened, and there were some things in there that are, I think.
Changing.
That have changed.
Yeah, changed.
Priorities have changed, so I actually told the town planner that we would leave that on the table, and, and somehow schedule, it'll be up to him to schedule some sort of, perhaps a joint meeting with the planning board and the town council to discuss that in a workshop.
All right, so I have a motion.
Motion to retable.
Hold on.
Because he took it off, yeah.
No, we didn't vote it yet.
We haven't voted on it yet, we went into discussion.
This is discussion of it.
So if you don't want to take it off the table, you've got to vote no. If you want to take it off the table, you've got to vote yes.
Wait, what?
All right.
Right now, you're voting to take it, put it back on the table.
It wasn't seconded.
It was seconded.
Got you, got you.
It was seconded, so I need a yes to move forward, or a no to keep it on the table.
Okay, I got you.
Keep it tabled. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
We're going to keep it tabled.
Yes.
We'll discuss on a later, we'll discuss on a later date when we're going to have this workshop.
So what's that off the table?
Would it say?
Five zero, no, yes. Most of that table on the table is different.
Ordinance 2019 dash eight, second reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, an ordinance amending chapter 2.5 alcoholic beverages, Article 2 licenses, section 2.5 dash 24 license applications and 2.5 dash 25 license renewal application of the Town of, of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance?
Second. Do the second now?
This was just a housekeeping to straighten out the notices for the second, for the renewals. It was a matter of housekeeping.
Any public comment on this? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Harry Beth?
Recuse myself.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? For the record, Councilwoman Williamson, recuse herself.
Ordinance 2019 dash 10, first reading sponsored by Councilman Luchardi, an ordinance amending Appendix C, traffic ordinances of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick, stop sign at Cochran Street, at Judy Terrace and Judy Terrace at Cochran.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
Went before the Traffic Committee, the Traffic Committee made the recommendations at the request of Councilman Luchardi, stop sign on Cochran Southbound at the intersection at Judy Terrace, and a stop sign on Judy Terrace Westbound at the intersection of Cochran Street.
And this, this came, just to make it clear, this came last year to me, to come out and see, there had been an accident there, there the year before, it's an intersection that has numerous households with children there, and, and they're playing all the time. And, and I know, I know the stop sign isn't to curb speed, but, you know, I, I visited the area several times over the last, you know, nine months or so in different seasons, and, and the cars go pretty fast down there.
The Traffic, the Traffic Committee did a study on it.
So, and it is parallel to Lockwood, which has that same type of stop sign setup, so.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Harry Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
Deuxem portable air compressor sponsored by Council President Goslin, resolved at the Town Council of West Warwick hereby awards the 2019 bid for the Deuxem P185 WDO dash T4F portable air compressor to ATS Equipment Inc. in the amount of $23,300 for the Public Works Department. The monies will come from the capital budget account.
Move resolution.
Second. Moving second. Freddie, you want to just give us an update on this?
Good evening. So, yeah, we asked for the, for the compressor during our capital project hearings. It's easiest, it'll, it'll give us a better, you know, like, way to do our cutting around sewer covers and drainage project, it's more feasible, and it'll take more, Leslie, I'm sorry, less manpower.
Any questions for Fred?
I, I just, from my own education, tell me about piggybacking off North Kingston.
Yes, off of North Kingston.
Yeah, and tell me how that happens and why that happens?
Um, it's, so we don't have to go out to bid, because there's already a bid in process, so we just, I'll piggyback off of them, so it's a lot quicker.
Even though that, that was like in 2018?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that the norm?
That would be a fine answer question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Rhode Island general laws state that you can use other municipalities purchasing agreements, the state MPA, you can even go to other states purchasing, like Boston, Mass.
Any timeframe though? I mean, because prices do change.
It does not specify a timeframe.
So hypothetically, someone could come with something from three years ago that, what prices might have changed, or?
I, I think that in this situation, the price, they got the same price for the, I looked over the document, they got the same price for the, so it would be logical to, to use it.
Okay.
I, I don't have the budget in front of me, if there is money for this, correct?
Twenty-five thousand was budgeted.
Yeah.
Also, in, in the past, we've used other cities and towns such as Warwick because they have better buyer power, buying power.
That makes sense.
So to jump onto them, sometimes it's better. Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you, Freddie.
Election cybersecurity upgrades sponsored by Council President Goslin, resolved at the Town Council, hereby approves the purchase of the following equipment to increase cybersecurity for 2020 elections, Windows 10 for the five CBRS computers, 3500, Windows 10 compatible jitsu scanner 450, this will be funded through a grant to the Secretary of State's cybersecurity, $2,441, and the request rate is for the, us in elections to use $1,459 to make the project out of election supplies and expenses to do this project, January 14th.
Okay, I guess I'm going to move it before you give the whole explanation. Move the resolution?
Second.
Discussion, Marion?
January 14th, Windows 7 is no longer supported. When you're talking about elections, we have three national and one referendum, hopefully only one referendum, next year, cybersecurity is of the utmost importance, this is a small grant that's going to do a lot. In order to do all five of the computers that have the CBRS, the central voter registration system on them, it will cost $3,900. It may, we may not need the scanner, at this point, we do not know if the scanner we currently have, it's about four years old, if it's compatible, that would be the only thing that would be less. Aside of that, it's just bringing everything up to, we're switching over computer by computer in the town, but this is important to get this in as soon as possible, so I thought for that small amount of money, get all five of them upgraded, just for security purposes. Cybersecurity is a biggie with the Secretary of the State.
So the only reason that that is a separate item from the discussion item down on the agenda, which talks about Windows 7 upgrades, is to get it done quickly? Okay.
Just the CBRS, there's five, there's no reason to do three with the money from the Secretary of State, we can do all five.
Yep. Any questions for Marion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Capital Improvement Program Police Communications, resolved at the Town Council, hereby approves the purchase of 13 portable and mobile radios from Motorola Solutions. On the State of Rhode Island's Master Price Agreement, MAP number 395, as part of the NASPO Value Point Equipment Contract, the purchase will be funded from the following sources. Police FY 2020 Capital Communications, $25,000, State Drug Forfeiture Account, $41,689.30 for a total of $66,689.30.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Do the second, chief?
Good evening, this, this item and the following are part of a capital improvement program that was instituted by then-police chief Rick Silva, to keep us on target, on keeping us with efficiently operating equipment for the safety of our personnel. Outside of personnel and getting, hiring and retaining the best people and, and getting them the, the best training available, is to supply them with their lifeline, which is their police radios, and with the current trend of interoperability during critical incidents. I am proposing to make this purchase, some of which keeps our frontline police cars with the newest radios, that our new hired personnel gets issued a new radio, and also the, a group of seven portables that are going to have extra capabilities during critical incidents to be able to talk to people on task forces, the school departments, or our surrounding communities during those critical incidents. As mentioned, the, the funding coming from these would be 25,000 out of my capital line item of communications, and the balance coming from our state drug forfeiture account.
Any questions for the chief?
How much do you have in that account, chief?
That one right now, as of last month, is 58,000.
Does that expire?
Does not expire, just has permissible uses restricted on what I can use it for.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Capital Improvement Program Police Vehicles, resolved at the Town Council, hereby approves the purchase of three new marked Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for use by the Patrol Division, and one new unmarked Ford Interceptor utility vehicle to maintain our emergency response fleet. The purchase will be made through the State of Rhode Island's Master Price Agreement, MPA number 551, Police Vehicles, and will be funded from the following sources. 2019 DOJ JAG Grant, 2019 dash DJ dash BX dash TBA, $13,134. Police Car Detail Fund, $105,479.35. And Trust Claim Funds Card, 34, $14,125 for a total expenditure of $132,738.35.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Chief?
Again, part of our 10-year capital improvement plan was to infuse our fleet with approximately three frontline police vehicles a year, and then alternating years on either administrative type vehicle or special use vehicle. This year, it would be an unmarked administrative vehicle that would end up trickling down into our detective division. Sadly, we've lost a vehicle, which is why there is a, part of this funding mechanism is a trust claim for a car that was totaled in a crash back in June, we have slightly over $14,000 from that. The JAG grant that we get from the federal government each year varies between 12 and $14,000, and a permissible use is police vehicles, and the balance would be paid for out of our police detail fund, which is $105,000 out of this, the current balance right now is about $155,000.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting, resolved that the, I should say amended, amended minutes of the July 16, 2019 Town Council meeting previously tabled, August 6, 2019, executive session, and August 6, Town Council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move resolution.
Second. Moving second, discussion?
Do those need to be moved off the table?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
Just the first one.
I would move that we take the 7/16/2019 minutes off the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, any other motion?
I will move resolution.
Second. Moving second, discussion. The only thing that we need to discuss here tonight, Town Manager, is a letter needs to be sent to the Pension Board. The last Pension Board meeting, because of the minutes, they said that we accepted the agreement to pay the $1,500 when we voted down not to pay that $1,500, so that needs a letter written to them to let them know that that's, and Madam Clerk, if you could take care of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agendas, license applications, resolved that consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Have a motion? I need a motion to move the licenses, I'm going to write this myself.
Make a motion to move the licenses.
Second. Moving second, Councilman Messi have accused himself. Any discussion? Any public discussion on the licenses? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I, I do have a question, it wasn't appropriate to ask it about a second ago, but a, a group had put in for a license, and it's not on here, and their event is coming up, it'll be after our next council meeting, but it should have been on, I was told it should have been on this agenda. So I was just told this tonight, it's for St. Joseph's School, for a beer and wine event. So I was told it should have, it was enough time for it to be on this agenda. So will this be, our next meeting is the 17th, the event is the 27th.
It should be fine.
So they want to make sure they're okay to advertise and sell tickets and all that, so why it was not on here, I don't know, so.
Did I speak to Paula about that?
I, Marion, I'm just getting.
Okay.
Shivering on tonight, it's not, so, again, it's a little bit of, what do we do? How do we move forward, so?
Should be fine. Unless you're going to vote no, or if anybody's going to vote no, I'm the priest.
No. Don't, don't notify God.
Just, all right, no, on letter P.
You pass?
Yeah, we passed the license, she just asked a question later.
Okay. Additions and cancellation of taxes, resolved that the attached additions in the amount of $3,579.21, and cancellations in the amount of $2,697.11 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council, in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Court of Ordinances, is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Resolution.
Second. Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion?
Actually, I just had a question, the solicitor, the JG Royal Mill, there are small amounts here, is that just to clean things up?
That's the same thing, it's sound like you're better off, that was the, there's a small parcel of property.
Okay.
That basically those numbers take into consideration. We had an agreed upon amount from the litigation.
I, I remember that.
It was in court, and it was a total, these two smaller lots were included in, actually we, we made out by $500, because they wanted to take something off another parcel, and they would have paid less money, so.
Okay.
Doing this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignation of the West Warwick Department of Public Works Director, resolved that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignation from Dave, David Picosi of the West Warwick Department of Public Works as director for the Town of West Warwick.
Resolution.
A second. Moving seconded, discussion, again, Dave gave us his resignation letter, I wish him luck, thank you for your year of service, good luck in your new business endeavor with pile driving, and, you know, obviously there's some information on there that he wanted the council to see, so, and again, we had a study done by Charlie Lombardi, Lombardi? Lombardi? You know, and again, we, we continue working forward with those, with that report, and we're still negotiating, so at that point, we can continue doing what we're doing. With that being said, some people have asked who's gonna be in charge, obviously, the Assistant Director will be in charge, and Town Manager, you'll be sending out a posting on this position?
Yes, I, I redrafted the prior one yesterday, review it, and that will be sent out this week to the Rhode Island Legal Cities and Towns, the, the Public Works Association of Rhode Island, and the state has a job website for state jobs, so, as well as our own local website, our own website.
Thank you. Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. No, it doesn't matter, I know he's leaving.
Well, I agree with you, I'm not in favor, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve it.
I just, I'd like to say, I, I think, you know, I, I really don't know David Picosi that well, but I think he's tried to change some culture here that, and, and get things done, and, and talks with him, it's been, been a difficult situation, I know, I think it'd be a challenge for anybody, but, we're hoping we can move forward, and, and I know there's a lot of, a lot of projects in Ward Four that need to be done and on, on tap to get finished, so, we'll be talking about that.
And again, we all know it's, we, we discussed it last council meeting, there is a manpower issue down there, when you have a staff of twenty-two and there's only got less than ten coming in, or due to various reasons, it's, it's very hard to run a department, and hopefully, we can work on that also. Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Reports, June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen Finance Report.
Good evening, councilors. Here's the June two thousand and nineteen Monthly Finance Report. Current year tax collections to date were sixty-three million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents, which is a little bit more than a hundred percent of the budget for current year taxes. Collections are on target and for the completion of the fiscal year. Prior year tax collections to date came in at one point four million dollars, which was equal to eighty, eighty-two point three-nine percent, which is, has been in line with what it's been coming in at over the last few years, and why we reduced it in the two thousand and twenty budget to one point five million. Overall, projected revenues are a hundred and one point three-four percent higher than expected, part of that is the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand passed through to the school, that does not have an effect on our general fund. Overall, the general fund's revenues were three, approximately three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over budget, and they are attributed to higher-than-expected receipts for town clerk building, finance, which is investment revenue, rescue revenue, and current year tax collections. Overall, projected expenditures came in right on target, about hundred, hundred point two percent of the budget expended. The majority of the departments came in below budget, again, when you factor out the extra nine hundred and seventy-five thousand passed through for the school, the general fund expended ninety-nine point two percent of its budget. It sums up to approximately seven hundred thousand less than what was budgeted, and the majority of this was attributed to lower-than-anticipated salary line items. Many departments were understaffed this year due to vacancies caused by illness, injury, or attrition. Other contributing factors were less-than-anticipated spending in DPW, parks and grounds, legal, and capital. Any capital projects not completed will be reserved in the financial statements for use in fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Overall, we're expecting a healthy surplus, which will increase our unrestricted fund balance and further put the town on track to regain its healthy financial status.
Any questions for Kristen?
I did wanna mention the Civic Center, just briefly, it did come in at a deficit less than what we were projecting last time, and I did wanna point out that the revenues really came in almost spot-on, and it, the over expenditures were one because of the lease that had one more payment in nineteen that wasn't expected, and then the salaries and overtime because of the contractual constraints that we face when trying to schedule workers for the Civic Center. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's about all I have.
Any questions for Kristen?
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Town Managers Report.
I have four items to mention this evening. First is the Rhode Island Community Block Grant Award. As the council recalls, on May seventh of this year, the council approved an application to be sent to the state for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and at that time, the change, the state was going through a, a change in their process to become more competitive, and last month, the town received a letter indicating that the town was awarded one million, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars from the program, that is the highest award from the CD, CDPG program that the town has received. The four projects, the, the projects approved were Brighton Street, Brighton Street Drainage, Phoenix Infrastructure for five hundred thousand, Church Street Roadway, Compton Infrastructure, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, Harris Avenue Roadway, Phoenix Infrastructure, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and Support of the Cornerstone Adult Services of forty-five thousand, and the administrative expenses to run the program at sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, great work by the CDPG Coordinator, Elaine, and the good projects that were brought forward that were well-received by the State of Rhode Island. Where do we go from here? Environmental reviews will be conducted, projects will be discussed, and, you know, again, meetings will be held and the project will be structured. Tentative bidding will be late winter of two thousand and twenty, for work commencing the spring and summer of two thousand and twenty, so, that is, again, very good news for the town, so, we're very happy to share that with the public. Quarterly Directors Reports Update-
Can I, can I add to that, Randy?
Yes.
Real quick, I, I think people should really be aware of how vital that position is, you just brought in, Elaine Mansour, just brought in one million dollars to the town for infrastructure, that we, there's no other money coming in, so, and we all know that certain roads in town needs to, need to be fixed, so, and I'm glad Church Street is one of them, so.
I just wanna point out, just so people know, Ward Five is not entitled to any of the money for the grant, we do not qualify in Ward Five, unfortunately, I think people should know that, so, when they see the work happening in Ward Four, it's not because any particular reason other than Ward Five does not qualify, I guess they consider the area too wealthy.
So, it's, it's literally broke, like, they decide, they decided by the ward, it's not by street or area?
It's actually broken down, I've spoken to Elaine several times.
It's by age of infrastructure and so on.
But it's, but it's the whole ward in general?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's the age of infrastructure-
We, we have plenty of roads in our ward that we need fixed, too.
Eligibility.
Yes.
Over residents.
So, I, I know I put a request in for Goff Avenue, Potter Avenue, Youngs Avenue, and Harris Avenue, and glad to see we got one out of the four, so, hopefully, next year, we can keep reapplying, and, again, I know I spoke to Councilman Williamson about Phoenix Avenue, 'cause it's in both our wards, and hopefully, next year, we can maybe try to get that also.
So, what would they do in a situation where the, where the street is, like, broken up, they would have to stop in the middle before they reached, like, if Jay and John had the same road and it went to the other ward?
It could, it could do-
Well, we don't really have any connecting road, I guess, theoretically.
There's not in there, I mean, well, for you and David, you get-
We're, we're given a map-
We qualify.
And, we're given a map, and the roads that qualify have to be in that, that particular map, and if, if they're not, then we, they don't qualify, we can't use the money for that, so.
We both qualify, but I was just thinking, like, Pulaski Street, it's part of the line, I didn't know that worked.
Most of the time, it's also gonna be, so, for instance, Brayton Street, Steve Izzy's been here numerous times about his building over there flooding over the years, we've been applying and applying and applying, we've been denied almost every year, this is the first year that we actually, we, we've paid for engineering, it's shovel-ready, so, we've already paid for the engineering over there and everything else, so, Elaine did all that work over the past four, five years, and now resubmitted with all those plans, so, now she got it approved, so, again, you know, I wanna say what Councilman Machary said, that position is very vital, you know, it came to our attention last year that with the, with President Trump, he wanted to cut those positions and the funding for those positions, and we, as a council, decided, we're not gonna cut that position, that position brings in a lot of money, and it's a vital position in this town, especially with our age and infrastructure, so, again, thank you to Elaine and group, who, I know Mark helps her and she helps him with the engineering portion of it, so, thank you to everybody involved getting this done for the town as well.
Thank you, yes.
Anything?
The quarterly Directors Report Update, we did not have those for the fourth quarter, fortunately, there were a lot of things going on, and that sort of slipped by the wayside, but going forward, the, the quarterly reports by directors will be done, the next meetings for the quarter will be October meetings, first and fifteenth, the reports will be listed on the agenda, they will be attachments to the agenda, so, the public can review those before the meeting, as well as the council will have those, once they are submitted to the clerk, we'll also submit those to the council, so, you have those in advance of the meeting to review them and develop any appropriate questions that you have. These reports that we had were very well-received by the public, we got various, various responses from the public, say they're happy to see that, it was very good information, so, those will continue in a very structured format, as I said, well, they will be on the agenda, the council will have those as soon as they are submitted to the clerk's office for the agenda, and once the calendar is set for the new calendar year coming up, we'll have a schedule put together, so, we will know when they are due by and when they will be delivered, so, so, that'll be something that will be consistently done as a, just a general town policy. An item that was discussed at the last meeting under Citizens Comments was the New London Avenue Water Leak, so, update there. After the meeting, inquiries were made as to that situation, and it is a, an interesting situation where there has been no resolution as to where the water is coming from, so, the Kent County Water Authority has done their review, their testing of the water that's there, and the testing has indicated that it's not drinking water from their, from their pipes, according to their test, our wastewater treatment plant, Sewer Authority has reviewed, they've also taken samples, and it's not septic.
And I, I wanna cut you off for a quick second, I was on-site at the London Avenue with Sewer and Kent County Water when they were there, Sewer Department put so much dye in their pipes that the plant was probably gonna be green by the time they got down there, there's no green, there was no green coming up, so, it was definitely not from there. Interesting part of it was a gentleman across the street, right where the leak is, said for years, his house always had to have a sub-pump, and ever since Kent County Water put their new line in and repaved the road, he's never, his sub-pump doesn't come on anymore, so, they may have redirected a stream.
Right, so, in fact, the Kent County had a special testing done, which was basically almost like a sonar, to see if there was any, any disruption from, from the underground they could listen to, and they came up negative, so, what is being done at the present time? Dig Safe was contacted, they're going to be coming out and marking the area near there, and there will be some excavation to see if the location of this water can be determined, and Freddie, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
And I, and I know Warwick is involved in that, I talked with the Warwick City Councilman Sinapi.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, I'll be contacting Water, there's actually a, a Warwick water line that runs over there also, so, so, they're gonna come out and they're gonna test their side before we do any of our excavation.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Freddie. Again, if it's a stream, that could be coming up from a hundred feet up the road, which is breaking through where it is, so, it could be opening up hen doors of box, but we definitely need to get that resolved before winter, because it'll be, be real fun coming down there in December.
And the last item was, was, was an update, you know, when we had our, the budget concerns, we eliminated all scheduled overtime, and last month, we reopened the highway garage, you know, the backyard portion of that, so, that is reopened for the public's information on the first and third Saturdays of the month, from seven AM to eleven-thirty. Residents can drop off a variety of items, yard waste, tires, paint, scrap, scrap metal, cardboard, mattresses, electronics, now, some of these have a fee associated with them, but this is a, a big convenience to the public, and, and many people like to drop those items directly off at the, at the garage, rather than having them picked up in some cases, so, that is back open, and, so, we're happy to have that back, that service being provided, and that ends my report, Mr. President.
Any questions for the manager? Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Claims, Holly DeRoches, hot-hole claim resolved at the Town Council hereby approves or denies the following claim against the town.
I move that we take DeRocha's claim off the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move it again. Move the claim.
Second.
Discussion? Basically, we needed more information the last time, and if I'm correct-
We did get.
We recommend that you do pay the amount of three hundred dollars.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion Action, West Warwick Riverwalk Cleanup and Repair Sponsored by Council President Gazza.
Yes, I actually have a constituent, she's actually here tonight, Elder, I won't butcher that last name, Nurse, Nursey, 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 um, she asked me to put this on the agenda, she, she actually is very involved, it's actually her backyard across the way, so, she lives on the river on Provinian Street, but she's been sending numerous emails to us, and talking about the West Warwick Riverwalk, she's actually reached out to members of the Patoxa River Authority, she sent us some pictures, the only thing that we couldn't print up was the video, and the only thing she's asking for is that, you know, that we focus some time on the Riverwalk, anybody who's been around for a long time, going back to Wolfgang Bauer days, that's where that Riverwalk got put in, and, as I stated earlier to a couple of you, that this was a very expensive project for the town, it was actually an overspenditure of nine hundred thousand dollars, and the bridge itself, that she has a picture here, that is owned by Royal Mills, and, Mr. Solicitor, if you can just correct me if I'm wrong, the town did pay Royal Mills an extensive amount of money for an easement through Royal Mills, and in two thousand and ten, this bridge actually caused damage, was caused by the flooding and, and the height of the river, 'cause the water was coming over the top of that bridge, who is responsible for the bridge?
Royal Mills or the successor.
And how do we get them to fix it, because we did pay for that easement, and now we can no longer go through there, 'cause the bridge is closed.
I would assume it'll take litigation, 'cause they're not gonna voluntarily pay for anything.
I, I know we've been after them a few times, Freddie, but-
This is, I mean, this is going back to before I was on the council.
This goes back to when the prior owner had it, and they washed their hands of it, but then again, they left, J.G. Royal Mills has it now, I don't think there's ever been any type of formal complaint made to them, or formal suggestion of payment, but we can handle that, but based upon what we just went through with the litigation, I, I would venture to say that they're probably gonna be putting it up for sale in the near future, probably within the next eighteen months, just based upon some of the conversation that was going back and forth, but we can certainly put them on notice of their obligation.
I recall before getting on the council, I remember Councilman Drew mentioning something about a potential FEMA grant.
Yeah, but that, that has nothing to do with us, again, the town, the town, the town itself, and correct me if I'm wrong, was a million dollars, one point one million, for that easement?
Nine, no, I can't remember the exact price of the easement, I can remember the price of the, the overrun on the cost.
The overrun, I remember, was over nine hundred thousand dollars, because that was-
For grants that, grants that were anticipated, that never came through fruition, but I can't remember the exact amount of money, because there were three separate parcels of property that were conveyed.
And, and again, Elder's one hundred percent right, all this money that we spent on it, we have not focused or kept it clean or organized, and I know right now, it's a little unsafe, especially when you come to the end, I, I think there's opportunity to actually fall in, we, we, we need to focus on, Freddie, I, I know you're shorthanded right now, but I think it's time that we focus on also the Riverwalk, we, you know, a couple million dollars was spent there.
I just spoke with a gentleman from the River Authority over the weekend, and they're actually, they have a meeting coming up on Monday, and they're planning their cleanup schedule for the fall, so, I can call him again and ask if they can put that as a top priority.
If you want to just up to the microphone, I, I know you wanna-
I just wanna say something.
Go ahead, Fred.
We were in, in contact with Representative James Jackson, and he came down at DBW, and there was a grant to the J.C.'s that are gonna be going to a cleanup, also, the Riverwalk behind the ball fields, and I told them that we're gonna give them a hand with some DBW guys to help them trim some of those trees that fell.
So, are these different with, between DPW and the J.C.'s?
Yeah, but that's, that's, the J.C.'s is at Riverpoint.
Right.
This is the one that the-
Yeah, I'm talking about Riverpoint, though, that one.
We're talking about the, the-
We're talking about the...
Okay.
Well, just a moment, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Elder Nercesian, 103 Providence Street. I'd like to know who the River Authority people are.
Well, I gave you the list of who they were.
Yes, but their telephone doesn't...
But the phone numbers do not, do not match. So the list you sent me for the Potucks River Authority, I sent to her, she contacted one individual.
Yes.
Which individual was that?
Stewart.
Stan.
Stan?
Your guy.
Stan. I, I don't know what numbers are out there, so I can't give you a personal number.
I have his number.
They gave us all their home phone numbers, and two out of the three didn't work.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a fourth person, a lady, we have no idea who she is.
Well, Stan's my main contact, and I have no problem, if you'd like, I have no problem calling him tomorrow, and if you'd like, I can give him your number.
I did speak to him, the rest, I don't, I did not speak, they don't even exist, in my opinion, but anyway.
But he, he's my main contact, he's, he's the Vice Chair of the River Authority.
Yeah, he fixed the windows, though.
But, I mean, I have no problem, again, I have no problem contacting him and see if they can, I'm sure they can, put it on their cleanup schedule for, for the fall.
And then the mill has a bridge already, it's a very unsafe bridge, very, very unsafe.
Yeah, that's something we need to contact them.
There, yeah, it has to be inspected, in my opinion. And the other thing, there's a second retaining wall along the river, that belongs to the town.
Yep, you gave us the pictures there. Is that the pictures that we...
No, no, I didn't, I didn't send you the pictures. It has crumbled down, and it is undermining the first retaining wall, very dangerous.
We'll have to take a look at that. Also, I, I know Elder went in there, and she was attacked by many mosquitoes, unfortunately.
Yes, don't go. Don't go there.
So whoever goes in there, just make sure, because it is a breeding ground, some of the pictures she did send us, that nice red water, you know, that's a breeding ground, and she actually ended up having, she had to go to the doctors for it, so...
You should, yeah, spray it, I, I heard that West Warwick was going to be spraying.
That's still to be determined, we haven't, we're still trying to figure out where the triple E case came from, I know it was a West Warwick resident, DEM is talking about spraying, I know Westerly, but we're not sure of West Warwick, it's been the first time they've been spraying in many years, so we have to find out. I know, unfortunately, they did say it was a West Warwick resident, but they never said that they may have gotten it somewhere else, or that they get it from West Warwick.
Well, those mosquitoes looked like the one in the picture.
Yep.
They, they are gray, it's interesting.
No, you told me, you sent me the email, I felt bad for you.
So, so Freddie, I'm going to call Stan tomorrow, and I'm going to give him your number, so he can coordinate with you when they can do it, and that way, whatever's there to pick up, so that way, I'm out of it, you know?
The other gentleman.
Thank you.
And the lady, the other three.
If we can get those proper phone numbers for those individuals, maybe you can get them, can you maybe ask Stan if he has the proper phone number?
Yeah, I will, and we'll get an update, that's fine.
They probably don't have home phones anymore.
Well, as, as, as times change, you know?
Chief first, then you can come on up, sir, when you get a chief, you want to come up first?
I just wanted to maybe...
Oh, Ross, come on up, I didn't recognize, recognize you back there, just state your name and address for the record, last time I saw you, you had shorter hair.
Ross Adrian, 37 Brayton Street. I'm an associate board member, okay, I'll be there next Monday, so if I can have whatever you need on a piece of paper, I can forward it, both that and the meeting, and also give it to the three members of the board from this town.
He's an associate member of the Potucks River Authority. The Potucks River Authority, so I can, I can make sure the word has gotten to them, if you just write that in a couple of notes. His name's Ross Adrian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Chief?
There is a call tomorrow about the triple E from, and the bug spraying, it's my understanding that the Department of Health is doing more extensive testing in the areas, and then they're going to base their spraying off of those more extensive tests, to try and identify locations.
Test the Riverwalk.
Yeah, so...
She, she ended up going to the doctors after that, and she was all swollen, so it's kind of interesting, and she said she got attacked running quick, very hard, too, just...
So there is, there's a conference call tomorrow at 3 o'clock that will be on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, you're next, you might as well stick around.
Yep.
Fire ladder.
Fire ladder. Okay, so I just wanted to make the, the council aware, I believe I had sent an email out that August 3rd, during our annual ladder testing, there were some critical failures with the ladder. The ladder has since been brought to the dealer, and the dealer also found some additional defaults and a crack in the frame. So our, our truck is a 98 Sutfin 95-foot bucket, and it is going to take about $30,000 worth of repairs to get that back in service. It's been one month, it went out August 3rd, so it's been one month that it's been there, they have not received the parts necessary to fix the truck yet. And, and just so you're aware, this truck, the frame of this truck was replaced four years ago, the Sutfin dealer and the corporation is going to pay to fix the crack in the frame. So that's what makes a truck worth us continuing to invest money in. But our end of what, the other aspects of what is broken is going to be about $30,000. At present, we have an engine company running as a ladder company, we have our longest ladder on that apparatus that was taken from the ladder company. We've called Providence Weekly, trying to see if they have any reserved ladders available. We've called North Providence, and one of the trucks that we borrowed was from North Attleboro, so we're continually asking, you know, to see if we can get a reserved truck. In addition, we've been looking at used trucks on different sites, okay? And nothing has come up as, at present, that I could present to you, and I, if something does come up, I, I want you to be aware that if an emergency purchase, I might be making that purchase from the funds that we have reserved for apparatus replacement. It would be my intent that whatever truck we bought, we would be able to trade in or resell when we do make our purchase.
So if you...
Yep.
If you had to, you got a great deal on a new truck, you bought it, we have this truck that just got fixed, if you were to sell that truck, would that go back into the funds that you would use for the replacement?
That would be my, that would be my intent, my, my intent would be more to, if we buy a truck for the interim, let me, let me back up a step and just say, the, the amount of work that's going to be necessary to put into the truck is between 70 to 80 hours of man-hours. That's not going to, they're not going to just dedicate everyone for two weeks on our truck, so once they get the parts, we're looking at probably six weeks. It's already been a month.
So you're looking at at least two more months?
More than likely, you know, they, I, I tried to pin them down, and, and, you know, he's very honest, he's like, you know, I wish I could tell you, but until I get the parts and we get everything else, you know, taken apart, you know, it's hard to give you that.
The majority of that cost is the bucket itself?
So the bucket itself was about $16,000, and, you know...
This, this truck is pretty much law over duty replaced, correct? Because it seems to be...
It is.
The formative chief was constantly saying we need a new ladder truck.
Yes, yes, and in the apparatus replacement plan, they did, there was a structural problem with the apparatus replacement plan, they had planned for a nine-year purchase, you know, length, and at $900,000, or actually, it was a 12, I'm sorry, it was a 12-year plan, $900,000, that particular ladder now is going for $1,065,000. That, and that is a straight ladder. For 1.2 million, we can have a bucket truck, it, it's a much safer work environment for the workers, it's, it's about $160,000 to $170,000 more for that. They're big-ticket, you know, items, we've looked at several dealers, in addition to that, that expense, the length of time it's going to take to build the truck is between 11 and 1/2 to 14 and 1/2 months. So once we get all our funding and sign our documents, it's going to be another year before we see the truck. So we are hoping to have that done by early October, okay, have a, the final to be brought before you. We are part of the Houston Galveston Buying Consortium, okay, or Association, and they give us the lowest guaranteed government price from that, so I know you were talking earlier also about government contracts and getting the lowest price, but that is an acceptable That's, that's pretty much, I wanted to just update you, and, and again, if we do, are able to find something that is within our, and I, we have a couple of leads on, on, on trucks, that we'd be able to use that and trade it in, I took, I talked to a sales representative from one of the manufacturers, and they said yes, that they would take trucks, obviously they don't give you as much as other places, but that they would accept those.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Memo on computer equipment?
Kristen. Good evening again. In, in the spring, during our budget process, we were made aware by our IT consultant that the operating system, Windows 7, will be obsolete by January 2020, it will no longer be supported by Microsoft. We have approximately 94 computers that need to be replaced, we've worked with the staff at RCC to determine our needs, and we were able to obtain some volume discount pricing through Dell, which is on the state master price agreement for the state of Rhode Island. Dell has provided us with a quote of approximately, just a little under $50,000, and we do have the funds budgeted for, in the fiscal year 2020 IT improvements line item, and RCC will set up the computers at no cost, as with our new contract, that is all covered.
Any questions for Kristen on that?
How long will it take them to do that, Kristen? Uh, I don't know, would you say maybe three or four hours for computers maybe? No, really.
Redefauld her computer, and they like to do them in batches, so they do eight to 10 police computers to set up, so they're going to take weeks.
Yeah.
But we want to act on it now.
So eight to 10 in, in how long? Do they have multiple people working on it in a day, or is that...
I think they wanted to actually set them up at their shop, and have as many staff as they could work on them there, and then ship them, come here, set them all up, all ready, plug and play.
So they'll, they'll line them all up and keep going right down the line. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Reimbursement from the town to the West Warwick Steelers for electric bills they paid during football season, sponsored by Council and the charity.
The reason I, I brought this up, I, I met with the Steelers over the last month, and last year, we reimbursed them the electric bills they used at the field in Crompton. There are different reasons for that, we were in talks of what the town gives to other leagues, especially down, down in Riverpoint, where the electric bills get paid through the town, correct? The leagues don't pay for their own electric?
No.
Depending on the filter, I'd have to see which...
So, all right, because I, I spoke with Dave Pacozzi about this a while ago.
Jay, I'll just, I'll give you an answer on that.
Yep.
So when they rent out to private organizations like AAUs, they pay for lights, so they pay for, but as far as town leagues, absolutely not.
Right.
They don't pay for any electric whatsoever.
So we're just looking at the Steelers to get the same benefit that the other leagues do, realize they can't be on a, a field in the town, because we don't have one, we can't, unless they can go on McCarthy Field to practice, which probably won't happen, but, but, so, they're here tonight, President's here with his board, if we have any questions for him?
I just need to know what that one meant. I know, we went through it last, just go up and state your name and address for that.
Paul Levick, 136 Parnorton Road, yeah, we had this last year from you guys, and we were granted the $1,000 for, we were seeking the same amount, pretty much, that's what Jason said, we're, we're another U sport, and we don't really get any kickback from the town, we don't ask for any, but, not kickback.
Yeah, I would say kickback, Paul, I would change that word if I were to...
Sorry about the word. But just for the assistance, financial assistance from taxpayers. The money costs around the Football League is pretty substantial, I always explained that to Jason when we met, so we're just looking for the same amount as last year of $1,000 towards electric, only for the operating season, which falls between August and November.
And, and how do you get billed, Paul? So where do you...
We, we get our bills through, we get them to our PO box, through National Grid, there's a pole, I believe it's on Pulaski Street.
Yeah.
That's what's attached to our field, and we get an electric bill for the lights for practice at night and our concession stand.
Out of that thousand, how much is, electric is covered?
I have the total amount, I did have a total...
What was the total?
$750 was last year towards electric, but I mean, again, it varies depending on the year, what we're doing, how many, how many times the lights are on, if, how many teams are in the playoffs, you know, it kind of varies.
So I, I, I understand the inequity of other leagues, but I would prefer that we actually reimburse for actual electric bills, we don't get into a, a situation where we're giving a donation to the league.
Well, last, last time, last year, the bills were over $1,000, and we agreed as a council to give $1,000. So if you tally up your bills, for the season, which was August, September, October into November, if, if it was over $1,000, I, I would like to say only $1,000 we give.
Yeah, so...
If it was, if it was under $1,000, then it'd be the actual amount.
I think last year, as part of the agreement of the council, $1,000 was given to the Steelers. They could do whatever they wanted with it.
Yeah.
There was no actual payment of an electric bill. So if they're asking for their $1,000 again in the donation, and the council agrees to give that to them, then, then, once again, they can use it for whatever expense they want. If you're asking for a $1,000 donation, and on top of that, the electric bill, then you might be a little further down the road than you want to go.
This is just the electric bill?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we'd be giving a donation at this point, we'd have to give it to the league.
Again, it's not a donation, it's a reimbursement of an expense that other, other leagues do not have.
So what I, what I would suggest at this point is the league submit the bills to Kristen, and not to exceed $1,000. Does that sound fair?
So, say to me.
Does that work okay, Kristen? Does that sound good?
Yeah, as, again, it is not a donation, it's a, it's a payment of electric bills that the other leagues get.
Is this something we need to vote on, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with a term to expire 10/2021. And, and 2019. Board of Tenant Affairs, two terms to expire, two, 2021. Public Recreation, one full-member retention board committee, one term to expire, 11/18/2020, and four terms to expire, 11/18/2021. West Warwick Planning Board, one term to expire, 7/2024. Technology Committee, two terms to expire, 5/31/2021. Three terms to expire, 5/31/2022. Planning Board, one alternate member, term to expire, 7/2020. West Warwick Housing Adoring, one term to expire, 11/2019. Articulate Development Commission, one term to expire, 10/1/2019. Public comment, comments will be addressed to the town council, we will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address, please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens assessing the support of portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body but heard as requested.
Any comments from the council? Any public comment? Chief Villa?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Paul Villa, 15 Janet Drive, West Warwick, Rhode Island. The reason for my coming tonight is very concerned over the blight that we're seeing in the town. There's a number of buildings, and I'll talk about two in particular, that have been vacant in, in a mess for years. One sits about 100 feet outside this building. In fact, I was kind of joking with the landscapers in the back, that they could actually harvest the roof there and probably sell the trees that are growing up there, because some of them are about 15 feet tall. Building's been vacant since the post office moved up the street, I have no idea who at this point owns it. I have no idea who, at this point, owns it. The windows have been out of it since about 2005. At present, right now, one of the big plywood frames that they have in those windows in the back here is now falling down. There's room for somebody to climb through that. God forbid if the thing falls on somebody when they're climbing through that, it'll kill them, because it probably weighs about three or four hundred pounds. The property overall, there's weeds, there's all kinds of stuff. The other one I'll talk about is the burned-out house down on Providence Street. That house was condemned in October of 2017, because there were weeds and things growing into the electric service there. There were mattresses on the property. The shrubs were about twelve feet tall. It was abandoned property. It was condemned in October of 2017. It sat that way, nothing being done for a year. October of 2018, it burns. In fact, the firefighters had to cut their way through the bushes to get to the house to fight the fire. And here we are, fast forward to September of 2019, and the house is still sitting there. Bored it up, burned, with the mattresses in the backyard. Now, I can go on, I got a list of them. I've spoken to the council president before about this. These are on main streets in our town, okay? In criminal justice, we have a theory called the broken windows theory, okay? And it's one of my favorites. And basically, it's very simple. It just says if somebody breaks a window and nobody fixes it, it gives everybody the idea, nobody cares. Okay? And that's when you invite blight and problems and all kinds of stuff into the town. Why these properties, you know, Natick Pizza down in my end of town, they cut the grass once a year. We just had the annual grass cutting back in August. But from the springtime until August, it was five feet tall. There's been tires on the property. You know, these properties, I don't know how we're handling them. I have spoken to the minimum housing person, he seems to be doing a great job. However, these should be getting into municipal court. They shouldn't be allowed to sit like this for years on end. Natick Pizza's been vacant since 2010 and the flood. Providence Street School's been vacant since 2005, when the school moved up to Wakefield Street. This place, as I said, has been vacant since the early 2000s, when the post office moved out. I don't know why we're not writing the owners of these properties violations and bringing them into municipal court and having per-day fines put on them.
Some have been written up, Chief, and they, unfortunately, they cut the grass once a year. And I know that was due to getting, I think it came from minimum housing, because it was brought up to numerous people. I know, I talked to.
I called them, yes.
Councilwoman.
And that actually is, that is a daily fine situation at this point.
Yes. If they clean it up before the notice, then they don't have to.
Well, and I had talked to him about the Natick Pizza issue, because he said it was in tax sale, and there was some limbo going on there.
That's the same thing here with the post office. So, a few years ago, the owner, the disposable owner of the post office, which was Nick Cambio, came before us and said he wanted to redo the post office, looking for a tax agreement, so on and so forth. Meanwhile, come to find out, there was, because it went for tax sale and something happened. The title got totally messed up. The title, I'm not even sure if the title's clear as of today, but, so, we don't even know who truly owns it, whether it was attorney who bought it or Nick Cambio. So, we can have the town manager look into that. And again, I totally agree with you, I mean, we've got to hold them accountable, because I have a resident who came before, talked to me, and he's got a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of liens on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar house that, you know, that he wasn't, he didn't know he was being charged liens for. But yet, we have big things like this, and that's on a back road, hidden.
There's plenty more. Absolutely, they're wrong.
You're one hundred percent right. And you've got these ones on Main Street, now the Providence Street one, I'm not sure if that's an insurance deal, and they can't touch nothing until the insurance approves or disapproves. That could be the story with that.
Well, you know, I still say that a building like that is a safety hazard. It's boarded up, if kids take the boards off, climb in that building, I don't know, I'm not the solicitor, but, you know, I still think you can put a fine on that building, and then whatever comes out of it, comes out of it. But the point is, we don't, we seem to let these things linger. We got the one on, you know, like I said, we go on and on and on. We could talk about this, I got a list of them, okay? Especially the main streets of this town. We shouldn't be seeing this, we shouldn't be having to drive by this day in and day out. You know, some people still think I'm on the police department, I hear it all the time, you know, why aren't they doing this, and why aren't they doing that? And I don't really have the answers, other than to say, I don't know, you know? So, I don't know if we should actually put it on the agenda some night and talk about this. I mean, it's kind of like, I was speaking to my councilwoman, you know, about our industrial area. I mean, are we actively marketing that industrial area? Are we doing anything to get businesses up there? Because we've had the Med Zone, we're going to have a thirtieth birthday party in 2022 for the Med Zone, and guess what? We've never used it, not one time. We had a couple of people come forward initially that wanted to do some work up there. That is a cash pile for the town.
There is, and I think, Councilman, you've been up there recently, there is some land clearing going on, there's some development going on. They're going to put a, I want to say, it's not, it's multiple business building, it's, they're looking at that storefront, but not storefront, just multiple businesses.
Right.
Up in there, they just cleared all the land, right across the street from Cox Communications, that whole lot has been excavated. And same thing, I was asked what's going over there, and I did some research, and I was told by the building officials' office that the plans are this, and it's just a matter of when permits are issued and so on.
Well, and.
And the fire stage.
The Med Zone issues too, there's a little more, if I recall correctly, involved in that, that in order to take that benefit, it goes from ten years from the first business, starts to draw and triggers.
Once you're ready to do it, you have to be ready to do it. So, you have to have a developer with a lot of money to do this. So, it's not as simple as just actively.
Right, exactly. You're absolutely right. And some of the problems we ran into developers before is we would ask them for a master plan. They would spend seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars to put together a master plan, they'd come and present it, yeah, we don't like that. Okay, or, you know, change this and change that. So, maybe the town needs to present a master plan.
One of which owns the decrepit former postal office. You know what I mean? So, it's not like we have people to choose from who are coming forward with millions of dollars to develop, so.
Well, and speaking of some.
It's kind of right now, Chief, like more on like a case-by-case piece-of-property basis.
Right. And I get that, but that's not going to work for the Med Zone, because you need to have someone who can come in here with the money to get all the businesses up and running before they trigger the sales tax benefits.
I would love to see somebody.
So, I spoke to a few developers back when I was going through this, and they said maybe perhaps what the town should do is get its own master plan. So, everybody can sit in public meetings, decide what they'd like to see up here, so when a developer comes in, they don't have to worry about getting fourteen changes.
The last developer came in three years ago. He wanted tax-free for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Tax-free, every building, he was willing to, and, you know, that caused a lot of havoc.
Well, you know, I don't, I get it, and it's probably somebody we want to deal with. I mean, they're getting a tax incentive for the businesses as they are.
And meanwhile, other properties that that individual owned were in, you know, like New England, center of New England.
Correct.
It was in disarray.
Well, and I get that, I mean.
So, we have to look at who we want to partner with and who we don't want to partner with, also.
I get all that. However, I think that, I'm just asking that there be some active marketing going on with this. You know, you hear other cities and towns, they're trying to draw Amazon, they're trying to draw all these other, we've got a lot of nice property up on James Street Murphy Highway that was supposed to be a casino, that's not going to be a casino, so, you know, I think that's something we should probably look at, maybe put it on the agenda. And further, you know, I've been to planning board meetings and zoning board meetings, and just the overall development of the town, you know, one of my big issues in Brookfield Platte was the pump station, because it was overtaxed in 2005, and we had catastrophic issues down there because of that. And I've asked several times that, you know, as these things go forward, no matter where the infrastructure is in this town, they should be asking, like, we're going to be getting new condos down at West Valley Inn. Has anybody asked, look, is the sewer pipe out in Providence Street big enough to handle that? Is it going to a pump station? Is that pump station big enough to handle that? Because in Brookfield, the rate payers had to pay upfront to upgrade that station. And now, to this day, we're still trying to recoup the money that that station cost us. So, we shouldn't let the horse out of the barn, we should be letting the contractors pay for the horse, okay, before they go forward. And so, those are the kind of things, if there's any kind of town infrastructure, no matter where the project is, that, those questions should be asked, because it costs the taxpayers a lot of money to do that kind of stuff, and the rate payers. So, I don't know, it was just an idea that maybe we could put it on an agenda, we could talk about it, because we, you know, I really don't know when the last time we actually had a hot, hot talk about where this town stands regarding development and going forward, things like the Med Zone and stuff like that.
And some of that is that comprehensive plan discussion, it ties right in with that.
And that's why I came, I saw that was on the agenda tonight, but, I'll be at those meetings if there's another public hearing.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Oh, happy birthday, Councilman.
Thank you.
Before you leave, again, Chief Villa said it already, but happy birthday to.
Thank you.
Councilman D'Amico. I know, Jay, happy birthday to you in a couple of days.
Yours tomorrow?
And I'm tomorrow. It's kind of strange. Third, fourth, fifth?
Six.
Six, so.
Six.
Anybody got a seven?
Lot of pregos.
Thank you. Have a good night, Councilman. Derek?
Derek Reed, 62 winters out. So, a couple of things we got to go over here. I hope all you guys had a great summer and a great Labor Day weekend, but I'm here tonight to address something I think is very concerning. Now, I know the answer to my, to this question, but figured I'd come here tonight to see if my theory is correct. As all of you know, we have brought several issues and concerns before this council for the past three years, and most have fallen on deaf ears. But during the month of August, I addressed the town manager in numerous emails about some very serious concerns, you as the council, and the manager should be acting on, but have not. So, please listen, and I'm going to make you aware of the emails that I have sent to the manager throughout the month of August. I will not go into detail tonight about each email, as I'm sure the manager will gladly share them with all of you. The first one was on August 11th at 9:30 PM. I sent an email with documents to the town manager about not one, but two buildings on Industrial Drive that were 100% built illegally, and one that is still operating on our cease and desist order from the town of West Warwick. But the letter, the cease and desist letter, was CC'd to the solicitor, so that must make this illegal situation legal. On August 13th at 8:52 PM, I sent an email to the manager about a very dangerous environmental pollution down on Industrial Drive. I also supplied him with the documents for that. On August 15th at 9:27 PM, I mean AM, I sent an email to the manager about a very unprofessional experience from an unpleasant tax assessor. No response. On August 15th at 8:46 PM, I sent an email to the manager about the playground on Factory Street that is not handicapped accessible, with full details of why it's not. And I held those details for a while, but Mr. Messier brought it up at the last one, so I figured I'd give it to the manager. On August 18th at 7:59 PM, I sent an email to the manager asking if he has received any of my emails, as he did not respond to any of them. On August 20th, 7:58 PM, I sent an email to the manager to address the poor conditions of the town sidewalks and curbs and buildings in this town with excessive weeds and trees growing from within them. On August 20th at 9:04 PM, I finally received an email from the manager confirming he has in fact received the emails, understands the concerns, and will have some of the answers by Friday evening on August 23rd. On August 23rd at 3:47 PM, I received an email from the manager that he was not going to have anything from me on Friday, but he would take them home with him and work on it over the weekend. On August 26th at 7:35 PM, I sent another email asking the manager about his responses, and I have not heard anything from the manager since, August 23rd at 3:47 PM. I understand that there are other things going on in the town, like personnel resigning and leaving their employment in the town, and I can't blame them. But the issues I have brought to his attention is very important too, not just to me, but to the community as well. Mr. Manager and Mr. Goslin, I am sure that there is yet another roadblock put in place on this matter, but we should sit back and think about this roadblock you are allowing to happen. I'm aware of the gag order put on the council, town employees, and town officials, with the media and investigators, but you should tread lightly with how much of the gag order you follow. And Mr. Solicitor, last but not least, I want to thank you personally for advising myself and my father to go play in the dirt, because it's been quite the experience, and it's not over yet. Thank you.
You're welcome. Some of the council may have received an email from me this afternoon, I was actually in my outbox playing with, because I had an email I sent to Mary Ann that I noticed did not go through, which were the pitches from Build-A-Min. I noticed on August 19th, an email that was sent to me from the town manager, I forwarded to the council, and it is from the Reed's. So, again, I apologize, it sat in my outbox for so long, it was just something, I don't know what happens when, because there was big files on there, so I had to get on a different network to send that file. So, again, you received it sometime today from me. Mr. Goslin?
Is the light out on this thing? I mean, oh, it's working, okay.
That's where I can hear it.
Okay, Mr. Reed sold some of my thunder, but on the 6th of August at that meeting, my interest was piqued by the exchange between Councilman Messier and Mr. Carrulo regarding the playground on Factory Street. And I got into my research mode, because I think I've mentioned before, I have a friend who's handicapped, she has to have a van, she's in a wheelchair. So, I looked at it, and it was kind of interesting, because Mr. Carrulo, going over his remarks, and the exchange took place at the one hour nineteen minute point in that meeting, he stated that, quote, "The engineering mulch is ADA compliant." That was it. Nothing about the rest of the playground. There is no handicap parking next to it. The bid for that required a gate that would be accessible, turnaround area, that's not there. Any federal monies used, they have to comply with the ADA Act. We were talking at that same meeting about putting a playground on in Riverpoint, when we have something up there that isn't compliant. Just to let you know, I contacted the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, they went and inspected. They have higher priorities, but the town will be hearing from them regarding corrective action. As I said, I drive there like once a week, just to check. It doesn't take much to put a handicap accessible parking spot, it's not there. You can't get to it from Factory Street. I don't know who's responsible for maintaining it, but I noticed, as usual, with a lot of playgrounds, there's areas, the gradients are out of whack, they don't comply. So, that's a major issue. Something that was on my agenda, and Mr. Reed mentioned it, just driving through town with regard to weeds everywhere on the sidewalks, about four years ago. I have a long memory, and I remember a young, well, not a young man, but a person slipped on sand where CVS in the churches fell under a bus and was killed. I'm not sure if that was the town responsibility, because we weren't cleaning, nothing was ever brought forward, because I think he was indigent or close to it, but I always looked at that, and I'm always an eye out on the town, how we're maintaining things. There are weeds all over this town, everywhere. What does it take to get rid of them? I know everyone's afraid of Roundup, but there's something out there where we should have a crew out there cleaning. If you're doing it, doing it with a burner. But, God, we look like a dump.
Alan, let me point out something. Alan, let me point out something, and I did send a request about the parade route. Obviously, we have a bunch of people coming in from other towns and communities, and they focused on that. And they, if you take a look from Providence Street, the whole parade route, they did a phenomenal job. It's all cleaned up, it looks beautiful. I've gotten many compliments, and I want to thank DPW. The unfortunate part of that is they put a bunch of other stuff on the back burners, like the pot holes and whatever else, in other areas of the town, because of the staffing issues we have down. Once we get our staff back, we can start focusing on that and doing a little better job on it. I totally agree, I can't even argue with this, on this, because the one thing I said, and I was sitting with Ernie and Mary Beth the other day upstairs, and we were talking about how nice the parade route looks. I even thanked one of the guys that was up there. And the, what I said, it's nice when we can focus on certain things, but unfortunately, we don't have the manpower to focus on it seven days a week, five days a week.
I'm glad you mentioned the parade route, because I just happened to have come down through Phoenix Avenue and came out at the bottom of the hill there, and I noticed there was a lot of leftover trash from the celebration. It amazed me, because I never recall that being there, but I could see the gold glittery stuff maybe somebody's had or something. But it was along the parade route. I mean, at least, maybe they could take care of that along the way, self-policing? I mean, we don't have Marines to go out there picking up everything in sight, but at least try and clean it up.
One thing we did this year differently was we put garbage cans on the parade route. And Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, it worked out much better. Usually, East Main Street is covered. And we didn't get into overflow, but they, people use the trash cans, and so it's something we can look at next year also. We tried something new, and that came from a resident who lived right across the street from Duncan Don and said, "Hey, why don't we try trash cans?" And she, I said, "You know what, that's a great idea."
We should do that for the St. Patrick's Day parade too then.
Well, we talked about it, and she's like, "I can't believe nobody kept that idea." I said, "Well, we just started trash cans the last five years, so, or six years, so it's not a bad idea. We'll try it," you know? People were hesitant, because they were afraid they would get tipped over, knocked around, dumped upside down. They did tie some down as best they could, so it worked out, and we can look at that. I know they do go around shortly after, once they get their staffing. We do resweep the streets and try to clean up and help out, and Holy Ghost will also try to help out as much as possible.
Okay, I did, but, you know, that concerned me, because I hadn't been down there for a while. And to see that after the festa, I'm going to use that term to be nice. But the weeds everywhere else in town are really bad. Liaison with Rye Dot. At the end of Coeset Avenue, Route 2, they started putting in curb cuts about three months ago. And it seems like it's at all stop, they're there, there's plastic bags over the top of the lights. I mean, what am I going to do? Find paper bags on the side with bottles in them next? I don't know when that's...
Are we talking about the island that's going from Coeset to Route 2?
Yeah. They put the curb cuts in there and...
Well, that's because there's a big issue with that, and that was because police bought it from the state without telling the town, and was going to get rid of that exit onto Route 2. So, we will all be going to the end of Coeset to take the hard right. Well, the town had put a stop to it, and that's why that's been, that's still going to be in the works, so it's going on.
Yeah, I had mentioned on Coeset Road, there was a lot of branches overhanging. They're all gone. I don't know if it was the town impetus or...
I had called, I called, um, it was weird. I called the state, and the first person I spoke with said, "Well, Coeset Avenue, Coeset Avenue is not a state road. We don't take care of that." So, then I called, then I got somebody else, and I spoke with Dave Pacozzi. And this was on, I don't know, maybe a Tuesday. Wednesday morning, 8 o'clock, I was driving down, and they were out there.
They were all gone. I mean, it was amazing to me.
To me too.
Kudos to the chief of police. He walks a beat in my neighborhood. And I mentioned to him, at the bottom of the hill, it was kind of difficult to see. He took care of it immediately. I mean, some other neighbors had voiced concern, and one of my neighbors wanted to thank you too, for getting that taken care of. But I do have another question. Gina and her roadworks, the Veteran's Square Bridge. You know, everywhere else, they put signs up, this is how much it's going to cost, this is where we are, et cetera.
She stopped that two days ago.
What's this, yeah, but what's the status of the work?
That's not the whole story, but she stopped putting the sign...
All right, but what's the status of the work? I mean, it's a disaster. They drove poor richer out of business, what they did narrowing the road. They've got it torn up, and I don't see any work being done there. So, we should have some liaison with Rye Dot on getting things done on that. And last issue of concern, Facebook, you've got to love it or hate it. There was a picture posted last Saturday of a vehicle in front of the town hall. I believe it may belong to this solicitor, I'm not sure. He's a vendor, not a town official. The implication would be that he was in this building alone doing something. I'm not sure if anyone here officially was with him, but he's a vendor. And consequently, he had access, if it was Mr. Williamson, and he was here alone, he had access to the entire building and all the information. Whether he accessed it or not, I'm not sure. See, he's smirking. But in any case, let me finish it. My point is, the taxpayers should have some sense of security with regard to this building. I'm not sure if any of you authorized him to be here, what exactly he was working here, was he here alone? But it's just something, the view, the perspective, the optics, is a term people like to use, were not very good. I'm not going to say anything else. I think it's just something that you people need to address, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to add one thing. I know we just talked about the blight of the town, and, yeah, there's a lot of issues. But there are always things in the works too, that go on behind the scenes that nobody knows about yet, because they don't happen. I'm just going to give a few examples. I was going to say tonight, but at the fishing pier that we own, I was in talks with the Patuxa River Authority to do a fishing, learn-to-fish fishing tournament, fishing derby in October. I just don't have a date yet, which, again, is a good thing for the community. I'm trying to get a bus stop covering, I'm sorry, covering over a bus stop that's right across from Kent County Courthouse. And that's, happens to be my ward, but you're involved with Ripta and the state, and, believe me, it's more than one or two phone calls. But there's things like that that are going to be happening, and it's just, it takes forever. And to echo what the president said, you know, when you have, supposed to have 22 men in, and you have eight, you only get the work of eight done versus the tw- first, you have three, get a third of the work done. So, it's going to take a third of the time to move forward. But I do agree, it looks uninvited, and it looks unkept. And I think, you know, hopefully, when we get the workforce complete, and things turn around, and we can move in the right direction.
Ross?
Hate to be the dead horse. Ross Adrian, 37 Brayton Street, West Warwick. On that topic of blight that everybody's been pounding on, back in the 2007, a lot of people lost their homes. A lot of the houses have been, you know, flipped and are now taxpaying properties. However, there's still a large number of homes that aren't. There's still bank-owned properties that are only maintained twice a summer, okay? Once in the middle of summer, once in the end, okay? The other thing I noticed, because I looked through the tax office, trying to find the owners of these properties, is that the bank-owned properties are still listed in the previous owner's name, and still taxed in the previous owner's name. Now, from my, what I understood, is that the town is supposed to charge about 1.5 times residential tax for commercial property. If it's bank-opened, owned, it's commercial property. Okay, enough on that. The other thing is, you were talking about doing work on Golf Street. When I was in the engineering office, and I'm pretty sure it's the same story, a lot of the drains in Golf Street have failed, the pipes failed, and it's not connected to the state drain in Main Street. That last is probably the most important thing, because without it, you end up with a river in the breakdown lane on Main Street. Going back to Richie's property, there are several problems there. There's drainage coming from down Brayton Street that goes into his property. There's also a street south of there where the inlet is just not big enough, and it comes on the back of his grassed property. He has some drainage issues of his own that may need a pump to take care of, like in that dip driveway. This has been going on since about 20 years, when I first started working here. The other thing is, we have an easement for drainage through his property, plus a catch basin there. So, I think a little quid pro quo is probably a good idea.
So, doing some history there, the catch basin at the front of the property on Brayton Street goes from a catch basin from an eight-inch pipe, goes through the building, under the building, to a four-inch pipe, which gives a co-bottle effect. So, that's that. The backside was something that was done back in 78. And I met the lady who owned the property, and she told me who did it, and it was just probably something that probably should not have been done in 78, but now the town...
Right, but even 20 years ago, we were trying to mitigate some of those problems, you know?
I have to say, we have to fix it, and unfortunately, and Mr. Izzy's been very patient. In fact, I haven't, was supposed to go down and meet with him, because he has a couple of ideas on his property that could save a lot of money, and where we could focus more on the road. Because, again, that tie-in, like you said, comes through an elderly lady's house, right through her yard, to a, just a giant drainage pipe going right through.
Oh, there's drainage stories I could tell you there.
And then it comes down behind Patriot Oil, through Patriot Oil's property, down across East Main, through Rick Loons's property to the river.
We have streams, that one wall of the stream is people's foundations, but not to get into that too much.
That's Wake Forest Street.
Also, on Brayton Street, we have a spur on base, it's like a little cul-de-sac, okay? That has not been paved, has not been drainage assessed in like, what, 90 years? And all that erosion ends up on, I think, 35 Brayton Street. It also doesn't get plowed in the winter, and it's town-owned property. Lastly, my issue. I have a hobby truck, and I have dirt bikes. Now, I've been told by the building department that you can't have an unregistered vehicle on your property for more than a couple of weeks, you know? That's all you're allowed to pair. But I know several people within my own neighborhood too, that have hobby cars, hobby trucks, whatever. And as far as my dirt bikes, you know, they're not really road legal. They're not the kind of thing you register, the kind of thing I drive in the woods. You know, so, I was thinking, maybe it's about time to, you know, like modify the ordinance to... I'm not saying open up a junkyard or something on everybody's property, but just modify the ordinance enough to allow, you know, for things like dirt bikes, or a ride-on mower, or a hobby vehicle, you know? If you're worried about taxes, then fine, make a town registration. We can register them with the town, and you can get taxed for, money for them. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, folks, for listening.
Thank you.
Oh, also this group, Roadie Rovers, it's a dirt bike club. It's been in this town at the VFW Hall since 1960.
Thank you, Ross. Any other public comment? Sir?
Sorry, Emily.
How are you doing? Just state your name and address.
Marvin Mallorca, 120 Border Gate Road. I'm really late, we went back to work, so. One of the comments that I have about taxes, I have a problem with it, with the problem that I have with the accident my son had a couple, six months ago. I want to ask the town council, what I'm going to do with the taxes that I got to pay for the time the car was inactive on my driveway. If I un-register the car, the town ordinance says not registered. My insurance policy doesn't allow me to have an unregistered car, but the car is parked right there. So, I don't know, I'm going to handle this situation. Another concern that I have, that road is a cut through going to Grantston. People spit a lot over there. I require, I went to the DPU, DPW, asking for spit bumps. They told me there's got to be a process for it. I don't know how long, I don't know what people's waiting for, some accident. There's a lot of elderly people, a lot of retirees that walk and exercise over there. And I'm very concerned, because I see the people spitting over there like crazy.
Which street is this?
Boring Gate Road.
Oh, yeah.
One more ten, at Wakefield and Province. On the turn, left turn towards Province, towards Grantston. If you can add a traffic line with an arrow to it.
It actually is in the DOT. It's been there for about eight months, but it's a state...
It's a state road?
It's a state area, and they have to actually approve it and do the work.
I could tell you, the one down on, took forever, the one down the other end of Wakefield to...
There's also, if you notice, when you come Providence Street and take a right on the Wakefield...
Yes, same problem.
But you also have that washboard effect there too, and I'm told the same thing. So, both of those, both of those issues have been brought up to the DOT, and we're waiting to hear back from them.
And one more ten, I'm sorry of that.
It's okay.
The elementary school going up Wakefield.
Yes.
I know they got a crossing guard over there. It's perfect, I like that idea. But she directs traffic, and for her own safety, she's not a traffic control officer. I don't know if it is or not, but sometimes he just jumps out of the curve, and I don't know if you guys can control.
Chief, do they report to you?
To the sergeant in charge of, at the youth center, and she trains the crossing guards, but I'll have her go up and monitor and watch and speak to them.
She's actually, she's very nice.
She's very nice, you know, I really appreciate it. My grandson goes to that school. But for her own safety, she's not a traffic... I work with a lot of detail officers, that's why I get informed before.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Ayes, ayes.